Good evening and welcome to our work session here for the Board of Education, Cabarrus County Board of Education on Monday, February 2, 2015. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Board members, I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda as written. David Harrison does the move.
Second.
Second. I believe the item that we asked for. I had talked with you earlier about adding an item on there, and that is going to be on 4.12, the adoption of the legislative agenda. So that is already on there, so thank you for asking.
Oh, yeah. Okay, good.
So we don't have to make a motion for that one. Jeff Phillips seconded the motion. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? All right, motion carries. We now have an agenda to work with. Let's go to 3.01, and that is the report section. And our first report, we will have Dr. Van Huclem come to the podium and talk to us about the General Assembly's school grades.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the purpose of this report tonight is just in preface to what will happen on Thursday where the General Assembly will release school grades across the state of North Carolina. You've known this was coming for quite a while now. In fact, you really led the state in passing a resolution back in November talking about that. So I just wanted to put this back at the forefront of our minds since it will be public on Thursday, and to remind us as well as our public as what school grades are, what they mean, and what they don't mean. So just to kind of educate all of us on what goes into making up your school score, this first slide here gives you a breakdown of the components that go into the letter grade that each of our schools are going to receive on Thursday. You'll notice that they're very different from elementary, middle school, to high school. Elementary and middle school have two components. They're based solely on reading, math, and science EOGs. Twenty percent of the score comes from their growth, and eighty percent of their score comes from their proficiency. Okay? And those go in to make up their hundred-point scale score, or their hundred-point score, and then that translates into a letter grade typically what we are all used to from our own schooling experience. High school is a little different, has many more components, and you'll notice it does translate into the distribution of the grades. So the high school grades trend to be a little better than our elementary grades because they have more ways to be better. But again, growth is twenty percent of the high school score, and the other five remaining components, you can see they're listed to your right. ACT scores, ACT work keys, which is a career technical education test that some of our students take, math rigor, which is the percent of students that have gone past Algebra II prior to graduation, our graduation rate, and EOC proficiency. One caveat I want to just highlight there, it's a technical piece with the scoring. It's not a straight sixteen percent, okay? While there are five other categories, they're weighted by the number of students that take those particular things. Not all students take the ACT, not all students take the ACT work key, so that can vary. It has a range in there, but it's approximately sixteen percent per, for each of those indicators. This next slide shows the range for the scores. You'll notice this school year, we have a fifteen-point spread for each letter grade for the public. What the public will see is the letter, A, B, C, D, or F. What that came from is the range of which it fell. So eighty-five to a hundred is an A, seventy to eighty-four is a B, et cetera. The other thing I'd like you to take note is that while, when we look at our grades here in a moment, they don't look so good, next year they're slated to probably be a little worse because the window is going to close. It's going to narrow to what we would traditionally, what we use for our school grades, a ten-point scale. Okay? So that is going to change by law for the next, for the school year that we're currently So here is a distribution of scores across the thirty-six schools in our district that will have a letter grade. And what I've tried to capture here, you've seen this slide before, is correlating the number of As, Bs, Cs, and Ds to free and reduced lunch, so we can kind of see that linear progression there. Technically, these are projections. We believe our projections are right, but I can't say a hundred percent that these are correct. On Thursday, the state will release them, but we're pretty confident that that's what you're going to see on Thursday when they're released. So to summarize that, we have two A schools in the district. We have twelve B schools, fifteen C schools, and seven D schools. One of the things I believe about this measure is that it's not really a good measurement of our schools. My child goes to a C school, and I don't believe that. My child goes to a really good school, and she's loved and nurtured and challenged every single day. And so I do believe that we need to have different metrics for measuring schools, and when we judge the schools and put a letter grade on them, we need to be really careful what that says to the community, what that says to our business community in particular, as well as those who live in the community. And so I want to highlight just three stories that you've heard me say before, and I'm saying them again because I think they ring true for this particular metric. First one is Royal Oaks Elementary School. As you know, Royal Oaks has just over three hundred students, eighty-five percent free and reduced lunch. A hundred percent of the teachers in that building are rated effective or highly effective by their growth scores. Okay? So out of one metric, we say every teacher in that building is doing what we would expect them to do with their students. The other side, other metric, we're going to put a D on that school this year and probably an F on the school next year. If you were to walk around Royal Oaks and spend a day there and talk with those teachers and see the work that they do with kids, I don't think they do D work. I think they do A work with those students. Winkler Middle School, we've used that as an example in the past. In 2013, Winkler had the highest EVOs growth in the state of North Carolina. Take all the thousands of schools in the state of North Carolina, they're number one. I mean, we saw the list. Winkler's going to probably be a C school, and I don't know how you could ask that school to do any more than what they've done with those students, taking them where they are and growing them higher than any others, at a faster rate than any other school in the state of North Carolina. And the last one is the Performance Learning Center. This grading system is going to really hit schools that are designed to save kids that are at risk, which is what the design of the PLC is. So we know that that school is meant and designed to help students who are disengaged from school, who don't fit in the traditional high school environment, who, you know, are probably going to drop out if we don't have another route for them. And so the PLC will be a D school as well. The other thing that I wanted to highlight about the PLC, because it also affects small schools, at the PLC you might have ten to fifteen students taking EOC. That means that every student counts, you know, ten percent of their proficiency score. So they have such a small sample size that the proficiency piece disproportionately affects that school as well. So you take those two things together, and they're hard-pressed to score an A or B on this metric, while, again, I don't believe, I believe they do A work at the PLC. Another piece of data that I think is telling, going back to the Royal Oaks example, this is not just true at Royal Oaks, it's true across our district, okay? For three years in a row, ninety-plus percent of our teachers have met or exceeded their growth targets with their students, which means when the student comes in my door on day one, I'm expected to grow them a hundred and eighty days, and by the end of the year, I've grown them a hundred and eighty days. And so the two metrics don't seem to jive in my mind, where we have teachers doing really good work and meeting the expectations that we would have for them, and yet we're going to have a lot of C and D schools in Cabarrus County. Our data is not unique. This is going to be true across the state. So here is a state graph that is measuring or comparing achievement in poverty, and you can see a pretty tight linear correlation there that the higher demographic schools that have less free and reduced lunch are going to score better on this performance scale, and schools that have high free and reduced lunch are going to score worse on this performance scale. That is not, should not be a surprise. We see that in a lot of data. Whereas when we consider growth, schools have an equal opportunity to demonstrate the work that they do with kids. And so Hickory Ridge High School and Concord High School have an equal likelihood of meeting their growth targets regardless of the students that walk in the door. So I say all that to just kind of prepare us for the grades that will be coming, help us understand that this year it looks kind of bad, but next year it's going to look really bad, and also just to kind of, you know, give the board some other indicators that would say, well, we want to, we embrace accountability, we'll expect accountability. This particular metric doesn't ring true with what I think we, I know and believe about the work in our schools.
Thank you, Dr. Van Huclem. Board members, do you have questions? Ms. Carpenter?
Well, I'll say again what I said when this was first presented. It's wrong. We don't like to label our children. Why should we label our schools? Again, we need to write our legislators and say, this type of, this type of thing is wrong. Just because Florida did it, why should North Carolina do it? You gave a perfectly, perfect example of Royal Oaks, Winkler, and PLC. This is not a way to measure. Again, I think we should write our legislators and say, we don't need to be doing this. We are doing a wonderful job. I want to thank our teachers, our staff for what we're doing, and again, this is not a way to measure. And again, we don't want to label our schools, and that's exactly what we're doing.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Powell?
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Could we go back to the last couple of slides? Just for clarification, are each of those points a school in North Carolina? So we see a couple of, maybe on the second to last, the achievement in poverty. There's a couple of little outliers, maybe, that, you know, maybe have a higher free and reduced population, but they do succeed, at least they kind of separate themselves, I guess, from their peers now. Those are the ones that kind of pique my interest, the ones that are sort of achieving despite the high free and reduced, and that's kind of been my teaching background and my background in education. But, okay, so I just wanted to kind of make sure that we know that there are schools that are kind of breaking apart from the pack, even if they do have a high free and reduced. And then I have one other question. So when the state calculates, we'll go back to maybe the second slide there with the grade formulas. When the state calculates twenty percent for growth and eighty percent proficiency, I know there was a lot of talk at the, maybe of the School Board Association or School Board 101 about, do we have the ability to do our own calculating of maybe a fifty percent growth and a fifty percent proficiency? Does the state allow us that opportunity so we can kind of maybe get ahead of this release? I know it's Thursday, but, or maybe put out alternate information to say that, you know, if we have, if we level the playing field, so to speak, with growth and proficiency, what would that look like? Because I know, I mean, I was at Winkler when, the year after, and the feeling at Winkler was wonderful because they were, you know, so, you know, at the top of the charts. But is that a possibility? Can we get something like that?
As I say, I want to make sure I understand the question. Can we come up with our own model and put that out there? Well, yeah, but the state's not going to recognize it. The state says this is their model, and we don't have an option to change that model. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Kind of, I was worried that'd be the case.
Yeah.
You know, in years past, they would give it to us in spreadsheet form, we could manipulate it, but it sounds like everything may be housed in EVOs now.
Well, and this was legislatively driven, put into the law, and then approved by the State Board of Education, this particular model.
Well, that might be something we could lobby for, the ability to maybe level that, the data a little bit. That's it. Thank you.
Dr. Phillips?
Just to kind of follow up on what Vince was talking about, about those outliers in the achievement versus poverty chart, I wish that the state legislators, instead of, you know, authorizing money to put out all of these A through F grades, and I'll talk about the impact those are going to have in a moment, they instead would allocate some money to DPI to go out and look at those schools that are outliers and find out what they're doing different, and share those best practices with the rest of the state so that we can try to bring everybody up to that level. That's how we're going to improve, not by shaming everybody with a red scarlet letter. So that's just my question. The one thing I wanted to point out about the impact that this is going to have, just today, I was talking to a new employee where I work, who's not yet, his wife is a teacher in Ohio, and he's just working here during the week and flying back home, and then this summer she'll locate down here, and so he's already starting to think about, well, where do we want to buy a house? And so, of course, I immediately started bragging about Cabarrus County and about our school system. And I didn't talk about, well, our math EOC scores at our high schools are twenty-second out of five, one hundred and fifty-five in the state, or one hundred and fifteen in the state. I talked about our early college program. I talked about the academies that we're putting into each one of our high schools. They're going to give our students the opportunity to not only leave with a diploma, but also a certificate that has a job-ready skill. I talked about the new language immersion programs that we're putting in. I talked about the, you know, the great opportunities that our students have to go beyond high school, that they received more than thirty-two million dollars in scholarships last year. We had one high school, just one high school that had three students that were accepted to U.S. Military Academies. I don't think that there's a high school private-public charter in North Carolina that can make that claim, and in fact, I'll be surprised if there is a high school in America that can make that claim. Those are the things that say what our school district is all about, not some arbitrary grade based on a standardized test that only measures two subjects, math and reading.
If I could just, we kind of do have an outlier in our own data, and it is the early college. You know, they have a little bit higher free and reduced lunch, and they are, I believe, will be an A school, and it's by design, right?
Mr. Chairman? Well, Dr. Phillips, thank you for your passion, and I, and I, we're happy for it. Vince, you too. Carolyn, thank you. Now, Mr. Harrison, you begin.
What were they thinking in Raleigh? That's one of my rhetorical questions. You don't need to try to answer that, sir. But we have in the Cabarrus delegation at least two House members who are very immersed in education policy, and I would like to suggest a formal letter, either from us or from our superintendent, explaining this situation and asking directly for some relief or some recognition or understanding of the problem this regime imposes on any county in the state, much less just ourselves, as well as direct communication with the Chamber of Commerce or the Realtors Association of Cabarrus County, stipulating our point of view, either with our resolution, the resolution that we have in our package tonight, or a more up-to-date, formal letter to these groups. This ain't right. Carolyn Carpenter is absolutely right. This is just so wrong. This is just egregious, and it doesn't reflect Cabarrus County and our capabilities and what we're accomplishing by just a long shot. And it's my sincere hope that the state legislature will swiftly take action to address this
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Farr?
Yeah, for a minute I thought I was going to have to get some pom-poms for David, but that was a, for Dr. Phillips, that was not you, I meant Dr. Jeff. That was a good speech. But, yeah, but, you know, and another thing, Dr. Phillips, you mentioned that about DPI going after these schools. I think we should be proactive, and maybe we should send a group to go to those outlying schools and see what they're doing right, instead of waiting on somebody else. But, so, it's good information. Thanks.
Mr. Walter?
Does this chart actually identify what the schools are?
No, that data isn't bargoed until Thursday, so we can't release that.
So on Thursday, you'll know what those schools are.
On Thursday, everyone will know. Yes. It'll be public on the website. It'll be part of the report card, right?
Yes, the report card. Shocking news, but the report card will be out on Friday and have that information. The reason that I paused over there was to find the outliers is not necessarily going to be an easy task because it's not a database of sorts. It's searching by each school. However, we'll communicate with the state and look at the databases that are out there and see if we can't locate that.
This chart, what is this chart here? It says 2011 on the last, last slide or last two slides. So where does that, is that the actual data that they're using, or is that not?
No, this is, this is a sample, right? This is just a picture of what happens when you graph achievement in poverty and then growth in poverty.
Okay, so this has nothing to do with?
No. This came from a Department of Public Instruction orientation session that we've, you know, I went to, where they took 2011 EVOs data and produced these charts to kind of show the connection or the correlation, if you will, between poverty and achievement versus poverty and growth.
So we don't think DPI is not going to go through that exercise? Or will they?
Of identifying outlying schools?
Doing the same thing, doing the same thing here, that's shown here.
I don't know what, I mean, I have no idea.
They're just set on, this is, this is the formula, this is the grade, so.
That's right.
So pretty, pretty much every school district in, well, it is, every school district in North Carolina is facing the same issue we are.
Absolutely.
So we're not alone here.
No, no.
That's.
We're not alone.
So you would think with the voice of many would be able to change something, but you have to, I guess, wait until you actually see the, the end results. Are we going to compare ourselves to these other, I guess we try to compare ourselves to a couple districts that are what our size and regionally?
Yeah, we'll do our similar comparison once they're released.
So you can give us a report on, you know, they've got how many schools?
Iredale, Lincoln, Union, yep.
Thank you for the presentation.
Ms. Schumaker, I apologize. I have one more.
Yes, sir, you may.
Dr. Phillips.
He stimulated you.
Born, he stimulated me, yes. I was just wondering if maybe we can't find the schools that are outliers, perhaps we could search among our own schools and find those teachers that are consistently performing above and beyond, who are consistently demonstrating high growth, and maybe form kind of a small coalition of those teachers, maybe some in the, on the higher end of the scale and some on the lower end of the scale. If they have a history of getting that high growth, then maybe we need to tap, tap those resources, because I know our district is full of teachers that are absolutely wonderful, and they have to be some of those outliers. Maybe we could do that. Is that something we could investigate? Maybe we could get with, I mean, what, we've got thirty-six schools? Principals probably know off the top of their head who their high-growth teachers are.
And with the PLC community, and I know that's been gelling over the few years, last five years, I think it's been since you started that, that has been a part of trying to get the high-performing teachers to share with the other newer teachers and with their teacher counterparts. So, and I think with the leadership that we're putting in place, that leadership program that we saw, I think that's, that's also going to help. But I don't know if there's any silver bullet for us, but I hope that this district continues to push to really have our teachers to achieve to the highest level. Mr. Powell, I know that you're involved with that, and I hope that you can find ways to talk to the friends that you have to make sure that the ones that you know are high performers personally, that they would share. Board members, I want to make sure that you understand, in our legislative agenda, A through F grading is one of the agenda items tonight. And on October 6, we passed a resolution about A through F grading, and Dr. Van Huclem came to us and gave us a presentation on it at that point in time. And some of the questions that we brought up during that conversation were, what happens if you would change the growth from twenty percent to thirty percent, or to fifty percent, or forty percent? What would our results look like? And, you know, obviously you could do any number of scenarios, but the bigger component is, is that based on our school district being somewhere between forty-one and forty-three percent free and reduced lunch, we've seen a large growth in poverty over the last six, seven years in this district, and it has challenged our school system. And we're still rising to the occasion, but we have a lot of children that come into our district that are challenged, and this scorecard penalizes them and forces them to try to fit into a mold that, you know, is going to be very difficult for them to fulfill. We need to, I think, make a plea to our legislators to really rethink this, and I believe that's what our, our resolution said was, it's not that we want to throw your methodology away, but we do want to maybe change some of the numbers that you're using in your methodology and make it more apropos, or maybe make it a conditional methodology according to the district based on free and reduced lunch. Maybe you change it to forty-three percent, maybe you base it on free and reduced lunch for your growth. You know, there are probably any numbers of ways to use that grading methodology, but I think that, obviously, this one here, one-size-fits-all, is not going to, is not going to work for the districts that are poor, and I really feel for the districts that are really have high levels of poverty in their, in their areas because they're going to all be Fs, no matter how well they grow their students. So. Any more questions or comments for this one, board members?
Just one comment I'd like to make. I think part of the problem is that we're in love with the idea of ninety through a hundred, eighty through eighty-nine, you know, equalling letter grades, and I think we're confusing how we use those as, you know, the percentage is correct that a student gets on a test leads to a grade. We're confusing that with the percentage of kids that get, that pass a test, and that's not the same thing. The percentage of kids that pass tests has nothing to do with the percentage of items that a student gets right on a test. We're confusing, we're trying to use something we understand really well, like letter grades, and transferring that to something new, and it just doesn't fit. And I think the state's forcing a round peg into a square hole or vice versa. So thank you for your comments tonight. I think, you know, I have a pretty good idea of what the result's going to be across the state. They've shared with us percentages of schools that are in each of those areas, and I really believe you're going to find out that we're above the curve, but yet it's not going to be a very positive statement about public education in North Carolina as a whole, and I think that's a very serious thing that we're doing to ourselves that we don't have to do. And the idea of fifty-fifty is certainly being kicked around by the general. being kicked around by the General Assembly right now, but even that, 50% growth and 50% proficiency, I think would put schools that are doing a very good job, but with very difficult conditions for their students, at jeopardy. So, I can't add any more to your conversation, but just thank you for what you said.
All right, Ms. Ronnie Boone, would you kindly come up? Ms. Boone is going to be discussing the annual report for 2013-14, and each year, our Public Relations Department complies and distributes this report. And I just want to say, for the past three years, our annual report has received a Blue Ribbon Award for Excellence in Communications from the North Carolina School Public Relations Association. For Ms. Boone, so Ms. Boone, come share us your Blue Ribbon Report.
Well, this one hadn't won an award yet. Yet.
Fifty-five.
We know that school systems have evolved over time from simply being the educating venue for a community to truly becoming a part of that community. And we're fortunate in Cabarrus County Schools that we have established relationships with lots of our local businesses and organizations, and we enjoy the, the fruits of those partnerships and, and that support. So, as we began planning for the 2013-2014 edition of our annual report, we looked at our relationship as a school system to our community. And we decided that we would like to focus on how we share our very best with our community and how the community shares its very best with us. Hence, our annual report for 2013-2014, I'm getting my years confused. The theme for this year's, for that, for this year's report, which is about last year, is excellence shared. And the excellence shared annual report, it features a little icon in that little green box that you see on the screen. It is the open share icon, which is the 21st century symbol for sharing. It is used in digital content and on blogs, smartphones, just very recognizable to, to people to easily identify shareable content. So, the theme of our annual report supports the way that we have operated in the past, but it always, but it also looks toward the future in, in terms of using that open share icon and knows that we are looking for new and innovative ways to share our best with our community. So, I'm pleased to just run you through the annual report, our excellence shared annual report. We will have the report available online later this week, and then we will have a limited run of hard copies available that you'll each get a copy of in the coming weeks, once we are back from the printer. So, without any further ado, let me share. And the report features lots of different photos of students and teachers and folks interacting with each other. And I apologize, but the, the layout won't display very well on, on this monitor, but I promise you, it, it really does look good. You just have to take my word for it until you see it for yourselves. And we have a message from Dr. Shepherd, and then we have some more photos. And then we have a section on each of our priorities. So, there are five sections. Obviously, our largest section is the section on globally competitive students because that is the business that we are in. So, we have more information about the work that our students have done, the work that the community has done for our students, and how we all work together in that regard. We have our section on our 21st century professionals, which is our employees, and the wonderful awards and accolades that they receive throughout the year. We have our, a little blurb on Ms. Han as our Teacher of the Year. We have our Principal of the Year from the previous school year, Dr. Khan. We have our section on healthy and responsible students, and more photos of really cute kids. And we talk about all the work that goes on to support that priority in terms of the, and that's really where we talk about a lot of the community focus, the philanthropy, the support that our students give to organizations in the community, the way that the community gives back to our schools. We talk about our Kids Plus program and, and the great work that they do. And Priority Four, we talk about our innovative leadership, where we talk about programs that, that attract new families to Cabarrus County Schools. We talked about our Home Reach program. We talked about the work that the, the annual report actually does, actually, in terms of, of how that tells, tells the story and, and helps to market our school system. We also talk about the grants that we've received. And then our final priority is our 21st century systems priority, where we talk about our operations, our effective and efficient operations as a school system, and how we share our facilities with our community. There's a great story in here about a television commercial for Cheerios that was filmed at JM Robinson High School last spring, and all the fun that, that went into, to making that happen. And then we close out the publication with a listing of our schools. So, as I said before, the, the online version will be available this week, and then we will also have hard copies available to you as soon as we are back from the printer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boone. Board members, are there any comments or that you'd like to make to Ms. Boone at this time? Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I think that's an excellent job. There's that, you that came up with the, the theme, or was that the?
It was a, a group effort with our department and the designer that, that worked on the, the layout for us.
I think that's catchy. Sharing is, is a good thing. And we're going to put this out on social media as well?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Could we make sure that we update our LinkedIn page and kind of get that information out there? I mean, maybe?
Sure, I will make sure that we get the information to our HR partners so that they can update the, the LinkedIn portion of that as well.
Thank you.
Can I just ask, you've touched on many of these things, and it's just a quick challenge to give some more background. What can the community do with this report? Why is this report important to the Cabarrus community, in your own words?
Well, it's important to the community because it helps them to know more about what's going on. I don't expect everyone to know about everything that we put into that annual report. That, anybody that does would have to be living on our website like I do. And, and I don't expect that from, from a whole lot of people. It also is an opportunity for, for the community to, to share the information. So, what we're hoping is that anyone who may have, may read the annual report online or have a hard copy of it, if they are, you know, if they pick one up from here, or if they pick one up from an event out in the community, that they pass it on to someone else, whether that's a prospective parent, a new family that's moving to the area, their cousins that live out in Wisconsin, or, you know, somewhere else in the frozen tundra that may decide they want to move a little further south, just that they would share it with, with others so that we can help spread the word.
Well, I'm just always very in awe and admiration of your work and the work of the teams that you partner with to get this done. I carry two or three additions with me all the time, and I refer back to them.
Absolutely.
And nerd that I am, it's good information and is, is valuable and pertinent information that everybody needs to know about what we do here in Cabarrus County.
Thank you.
I just said that I was.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Harrison owned that one. Would anybody else like to make some comments to Ms. Boone?
Just want to thank you for the great job you've done. And I'm sure this is going to be another Blue Ribbon winner.
Thank you, we're hoping so.
Thank you, Ms. Boone. Before we move on to our items for discussion, I would like to recognize several individuals. First off, Candace Elwood is our Resource Officer. Candace has stepped out into the hallway, there she is, thank you. She is with, she's our Resource Officer at Hickory Ridge High School and does a wonderful job over there, and we're just so happy to have you here today, Candace. And I know that the students over there really appreciate what you do at the school, and I know personally that they do, so. Also, I'd like to recognize Jessica Groover, actually, Groover Passack. And tonight is going to be her last time with us. She's going to be moving on to bigger and better things, and we've just really enjoyed having her with us. She's been a, a great asset to our community and to our, in this paper. And thank you.
Did she get a Grammy shake on hand?
Would you come, come say?
That would be a conflict of interest.
Yeah, oh, yeah. You might lose your objectivity in that one, right? But, we hope that you can pass on something to your predecessor, whoever the next one is, I guess, is your, is it, it's not the predecessor, what would that be?
Successor.
Successor, thank you. I need David to help me with the English.
Can we move this up next to get Lynn out of here?
Okay. Board members, Dr. Shepherd asked if we, in, in trying to help our principal here, Ms. Lynn Marsh, if, if you would like to entertain moving up 4.07 to the, to the next item instead of 4.01, would you, could I get a motion that we could do that, please?
Yes.
Okay.
I would make the motion to do that.
Okay, Carolyn, will you move that we move 4.07 up to the first position? Do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Phillips says, is seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? All right. Ms. Marsh, come on up, Dr. Marsh, and come to, and talk to us about the, the new Odell namings. I say that plural because we know there's going to be more than one.
It was brought to my attention that possibly we needed to do a survey for the Odell area of the parents and the staff and that community to see what their feelings were on the naming of the current Odell School and then the new Odell School that will be up on 1885 Odell School Road, the 3-5 School. And so, we put a survey together and had 646 responses, which was 72%, which is, that's very good for a survey, to get those results back. And so, I know Matthew Fella analyzed my data, and, and it came out that there were some suggestions that people that did disagree with the name, but not significantly disagree. There were 10% of those that were submitted, and then 90% of the ones surveyed were okay with naming the Odell Elementary that is in Moss Creek, Odell Primary, and the other Odell up on the 3-5, Odell Elementary. And so, I have all of them right here. If anyone wants to see some of the names that were submitted, there were a couple of Moss Creek Elementary, Odell Elementary, Odell Intermediate, Odell Elementary, Odell Secondary.
Lynn Marsh Elementary.
Yeah. I was very honored. I almost cried when I saw that one because I, but, but there was about four of those. There were about four of Larry Riggs Elementary, and there, you know, because he was a very stable and well-respected principal at the original Odell School. So, they are all here, and so, in saying that, there is, I think you have in your items, and Dr. Shepherd, you'll help me on this too, with the naming of the schools. And so, there was a submitted for, different forms submitted for each school, the one that is the primary, Odell Primary, and then the one that is Odell Elementary. And the results of the survey are listed on those forms, and it says the same thing except in the end where it changes the name of the schools. So, that is what we are proposing, the community and the teachers and staff, well, parents at Odell, and along with, I guess, Dr. Shepherd, that we named the current Odell in Moss Creek, Odell Primary, K2, and the other Odell, newly created Odell on 1885 Odell School Road, Odell Elementary, 3-5. So, you have those in front of you. And I guess I'm making a request on behalf of all these people, so, and as a result of this survey, results of this survey.
Thank you, Dr. Marsh, and I really appreciate.
Okay.
You must have gotten the word out to get 646 requests.
Well, I nagged people.
I mean, 46 votes, wow.
Well, we tried the connect ad, got 212 there, but we had a little trouble with the pressing. One, agree. Two, disagree. But it went through on some other things. So, I thought we ought to follow up with a paper survey, too, so that we would have more accurate information here, so.
Well, thank you for your effort.
So, it was 90% agree and 10% disagree.
Wonderful. Board members, board members, do you all have any comments regarding this?
Did we get to take your sign from Odell Elementary?
I knew you were going to ask that.
You knew I was.
I knew you were. And in the trophy cases, I don't know. I mean, you know, that's become a part of our school, too, that, so, it's, but I'm sure that it will.
I didn't know if it. I didn't know if it could be reused. I mean, you know, if it's going to be, if I'm going to have to do all new signage, and you've already got Odell Elementary, and then I wouldn't have to do a whole new sign, then I'd have to buy a US sign. I'm just trying, it's already cost me a fortune up at the other end, you know, I'm, I'm trying to save everything I can. I've already had to go and ask the commissioners for, you know, all this extra money, so I'm just trying to save everything I can.
Yeah, Ms. Carpenter, I've already made an agreement. If we see the wall going down up there, she's going to call me and we're going to go sit on it.
And chain ourselves to it, so y'all can't take the wall down.
But, I, I will let the powers that be decide those things.
Okay.
So, thank you, thank you.
Well, tonight, we're just going to talk about the name, not the execution of the signage. So, does anybody else have any comments on this side?
Mr. Ch.
Okay. All right, Mr. Walter?
The colors are going to stay the same, right? Stay, yes. I've got a comment that they wanted it to be Moss Creek because it was, because all, there were a bunch of kids, apparently, or more kids from that development were going to go there, but I think consistency is more important, so I think we need to, to continue with the Odell name.
That would be a hard thing to change, you know, if that was the case, because I think they've always been the color. And from what I understand, the dragon, everything, the mascot, but I guess those things are to be decided as time passes.
Mr. Harrison, would you like to speak?
Just that I'm, I'm very proud of everybody involved in the process, that, you know, we're retaining the very revered and appreciated Odell name and what that name has meant for the whole community and really the whole county in many ways. So, thank you for working on this so diligently. 60-some, 60% turnout?
72.
72% turnout. That's, I think that's statistically valid, isn't it?
It was 58 after.
And you worked it up, didn't you?
Yeah, and it came in a little bit higher than that.
Good, good, thank you.
But it's, but you're welcome to see this information and these other suggested names.
But it's a true reflection, I'm sure, of, of the community's sentiment on the matter. So, thank you for your great work.
Okay. And Mr. Odell's birthday is March the 3rd, so we'll be celebrating. So, we do that every year, too. So, thank you.
Dr. Phillips, or, no, Ms. Carpenter?
The only, only concern I have is having Odell at both of them on deliveries, because a lot of people won't look at addresses and they'll just see Odell at both of them. And that is my only concern, is you going to get shipments and they just see Odell School, and they're making shipments and getting shipments messed up, and you getting supplies and things, and then both schools being Odell, not looking at the middle thing. And the reason I say that, and I'm, I'm just looking at my, my, my husband's name, I got two James Carpenters, one's James B. and one is James S. And I have the biggest mess because nobody looks at those middle initials. And, and I'm always getting mail mixed up, and even though they both have two different social security numbers, they ended up getting the credit reports messed up. And my son got my husband's credit report, so, you know, first names and last names, you can really get messed up with it. So, I think that's something we've really got to think about.
That is a concern that my treasurer.
And I got a real problem with that because we can, you know, we get, we're going to get supplies, so that's something this board really needs to think about.
But you know, when the Performance Learning Center was there, we would sometimes have the mix-up still in the mail, our Odell mail would go there. So, we were real good about making sure and double-checking as it. So we were real good about making sure and double checking as it came in to make sure that we had the correct packages because, you know, the way we do it anyway, when it comes in, they don't accept it until they look at the address. So, so, but you are right. It will, I'm sure it will happen, but we've got good people in place to fix that because my treasurer's already got her eye on that, wanting to make sure that doesn't happen. So, thank you.
All right, Dr. Phillips?
Yeah, I just wanted to request, I'm hoping that this is going to go on the consent agenda, but I would just want to request that for next week that we include, have included as an attachment, a little background on Mr. Odell, particularly for folks like me who are relatively new to the county.
Well, we have some books that our children had created. They took it on as a research project. So we have them in our media center, plus I have 14 staff members that went to school there. And I have the homecoming queen of Odell there, in my front office. So, you know, we've already taken the bricks and they've made her a big trophy with her homecoming picture on it, so. So it's really, that would be possible. I'll make sure that that happens, okay?
Well, I am pleased that y'all have, that there was so much support for continuing on the name Odell. Both my children went there and actually Mr. Riggs was the principal and my wife was a teacher assistant at Odell over the years, so it's near and dear to our family and we're glad to see that it will continue on and now we'll have two schools, but the overall will be W.R. Odell. That's where you went through your elementary education, beginning to end, and that's, that's where we need.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, I'll need a motion. Or actually, a motion to move it to consent or action. Is this a consent item? Consent? All right, we got all consent. Thank you again, Dr. Marsh. All right, let's go back to 4.01. Budget amendments, Ms. Klutz?
Please come forward.
Thank you. Good afternoon, evening, whatever we are. I have a couple of budget amendments to present to the board today. We'll start with our state fund and we have good news. We did receive our allocation of additional funds for our growth this fiscal year. We just recently received that and so that's why you're seeing it now in February. You can see that there's, you know, a little over a million dollars allocated there for additional 194 students and that's on top of what the state projected. So the state projected us at 30,005,19. The better of the first or second month ADM ended up being 30,713. Keep in mind, we might have 30,813 right now, but we get, we get funded for the better of the first or second month, and I just made up that number. So, but the point being, Matthew, Matthew probably knows.
I hope that's the only number you made up.
Yes, sir. Today.
You have us wondering about your budget amendment.
Okay, but, so you can see the state allocates it in what I call pots of money. It's program report codes, so you can see the program report codes that they have allocated the funds into. And we know that 96 percent of our state fund is salaries and benefits, so that's why you're seeing most of those dollars go into salary and benefits unless, like in the case of PRC 014, the last one where it says contracted services, CTE, we do not pay salaries and benefits out of that code. We pay it out of PRC 013, which is a months of employment. So it's just the way that the program codes are structured by the state. So I'll take, well, let me, let me go on with the state and then I'll take questions. So the next one, PRC 029, the salaries and benefits for teacher assistant for the behavioral support, that was a specific request and we received, we had an allotment last year. We asked for more in the allotment this year. We received that, so that was good news. And then the last one is our license and title fees. So when we, the state replaces yellow school buses just in their cycle, they also send us the money to pay for their license and fees to do that. So that's a good thing, too. So I'll take questions on the state budget amendment.
Okay, board members, any questions on the state budget amendment? All right, one question.
So I take it that if it says, you know, salaries and benefits, teachers, that means we're hiring more teachers with this one?
So remember two things. One, when we adopted our budget this year, we made an allocation to fund balance of $3.7 million because the state made some cuts at the very last minute. And rather than laying off teachers, terminating teachers, terminating teacher assistants, that cut was actually, most of that cut was made to the teacher assistant pot. Well, we don't have, we have the minimum for teacher assistants and we certainly weren't going to terminate staff at that point. So we could have terminated teacher assistants, we could have terminated teachers and moved those dollars around, but we chose not to do that. We chose to allocate fund balance, knowing that that was a reoccurring expense, but we would offset it with these growth dollars that are coming in, because you obviously can't pay a reoccurring expense out of fund balance continuously or you're going to dry, the pot's going to dry up. So this is, you know, this puts us back in, in the position of relieving our fund balance or the reoccurring expense in our fund balance.
All right, so we actually already had these teachers in place because we dipped into the fund balance or reserve fund and so this, this just kind of serves to make us whole.
It does. It helps.
And gives us more flexibility if we want to allocate the fund balance elsewhere later this year.
Right, yeah. This is only about 1.1 million, I think, and we allocated 3.7 million. So we still got a little ways to go to catch up, but yeah, you're correct.
Right. Now, would you expect that we're going to get anything more? You said that the second month is basically that's it, so in terms of adjustments for numbers of students, there won't be any more for this school year.
So next year, right now, the state is projecting our allotment or how many students we'll have for next year, and so they'll fund us based on that projection, but it doesn't impact the current year funding.
All right. I have one question, or actually, I have a couple of comments as well. First question, though, you're basically saying that our second month ADM was 30,713 students.
That's correct.
Do you happen to know what the ADM was for the charter schools?
I can get that for you, but I'm sorry, I don't have it right now.
Okay.
It seems like a thousand.
Seems like they would also tell you how much that was.
Seems like what?
They would let you know, oh, but you don't pay the state directly out of your budget, it's only the local.
Right. They tell me, I've asked the question, they tell me they do, they do not know, because they're going, so a Cabarrus County student can go to Mecklenburg or wherever, Mecklenburgs can go wherever, so they, they indicate that they don't know and I understand that.
Okay. All right, the next comment that I have is, this is fine and good for our system because we actually were increasing. Next year, we're going to be faced with, and there was an article today in the Charlotte Observer talking about CMS, and next year, this, actually, this budget year, as we begin our planning, we will not be getting compensated for our, initially, for our projections for next year. So if our projections were to go to, let's say, 31,713, 1,000 student increase, we would still have to assume that our budget is going to be exactly the same when we go into our, at the end of this, at this budget cycle, as we budget money for the 2015, 16, our assumption will be going in that we will not get any more money for students, even though we may increase by some number.
That's correct.
And then we will have to have money in reserve, waiting for the state to recognize that we have an increase and we won't find out what that compensation will look like until sometime in the summer. And then next year, about this time, we'll get the final adjustment. Is that the way that's supposed to happen now?
You did a very good job. Generally, we get a planning allotment this time of year that would say, we're going to just use those numbers that you indicated, 31,713. They, the state would also tell me how many teachers with that 1,000 student growth that they would give me. And I would contact HR and I would distribute all those teachers and we would have those teachers in place when school started. That's not happening any longer. They're not giving us a planning allotment because it's, it's not built into the budget already. It's not a guarantee. They could take that growth, those growth dollars, and they can move it over to teacher salaries, they could take those growth dollars and move them anywhere that they want to. So the indication is that they're not going to do that, but we have no guarantee. And so we can't build our budget on 1,000 additional students when we have no guarantee that we're going to be able to pay those teachers. We need to be able to pay them. So yes, exactly what you said.
All right, so a methodology that we will probably have to use, because we still have to have teachers, and in this article, the CMS board is now grappling with the same issue and they're saying that they would hire their teachers in advance regardless because they have to compensate for growth.
Right.
And they're expecting an additional 2,400 students next year. We might get a 3 percent growth, which would be close to 1,000 students if we were to get that much. So we would have to go out on a limb and I guess reserve a certain segment of our fund balance to cover those teachers, at least for the year, in hopes that the state will come back and make us whole after the year begins. Is that the process that we have to follow from here on out?
We'll absolutely have to have dollars to be able to pay those teachers and there's no way around not hiring for growth. If we don't hire for growth, our class sizes are going to exceed the legal limits. So we have no choice. We have to hire some teachers. The only point that I would add is that we will know if growth is funded or not, when the state budget is approved, you know, it's not like, we won't have to wait this long to January or February to get our adjustment. We'll know, but by then, a lot of our really effective, good teachers are gone or hired by some other system.
And I think that a point about this that concerns me is that the number of school districts in the state of North Carolina that are growing in enrollment are very few.
No.
Most school districts in the state are stagnant and some are declining. So there are a few of us that are concerned about this. And then there are a good number of people who really aren't paying attention to it and those with declining enrollment, it's not clear yet whether they're going to be frozen at last year's number and if enrollment declines and they might get to keep some of that money. So it's one that I am very worried about and I think, I appreciate you calling to our attention and I think we're going to need to do more lobbying on this than, than we're currently doing, so.
Yeah, board members, the reason I brought this up is we're now going into the budget season and so when we offer up our June budget, we're going to have to have the fund balance available in the June budget to cover these teachers because we don't know how long we'll, we don't know if the money will be there or not. I mean, I'm sure that legislators will come through, but surprises have happened before and we don't know if they'll have an approved budget by July. It could be August, it could be some activities that just delay them because they're in the middle of some kind of quandary that gets them a non-approved budget. Mr. Walter asked me what ranking did we have on our legislative agenda and actually, I'm not sure exactly where that is. I'll have to look at it, but we will, if it's there, we will cover it. If it's not, we'll make sure we add it to it, my friends. So if there are no other comments from Ms. Klutz on this particular, yes, Ms. Carpenter?
Well, one of the things I was concerned about, though, we're, with what you had said before, you said we took 3.2 million out.
Seven.
3.7.
Yes, ma'am.
3.7 million and this budget amendment is only for 1.2. So that means we're still.
We're still behind.
Oh, yeah, 2.5?
Right, absolutely. And we knew we would be, so.
All right, so we still got to look for 2.5 million to put back in to replace what we took out.
And so we do have a fund balance and so the way that it was planned was we'll take out 3.7 this year, we'll have some growth, maybe, again, I'm just kind of doing numbers off the top of my head, maybe next year, if we can capture part of that with growth, then maybe we only have to take 2 million out of fund balance. Then next year, we're going to pick up some more growth and then maybe we only have to take a half a million dollars out of fund balance and then we're going to, we're going to eliminate that need to do that, but it's a step-down approach and that, that was the plan.
Okay.
We're still going to have, we're still going to have to spend some of our money for the growth that actually comes, but we are going to have to manage this, too, as we go through the years.
Okay, but we, okay, 2.5, we're still.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, board members, now we need to get back on track and let's get the rest of these amendments, but I'm sorry I got you off track with this, but I felt that this item was extremely important in the season that we're in and I just want to make sure that we keep it in front of us. Ms. Klutz, continue, please.
Yes, sir. We're going on to our capital outline budget amendment. This is the $877,872 that the county commission has allocated for, to finish up the Odell grades, 3-5 school. These funds do include the LED lighting. It does not, according to your resolution that we sent over, did not include the right-of-way. So we do know that this is not enough funds to take care of the right-of-way and that that will be a separate request. Okay?
Are you referring to the right-of-way slash Highway 73 improvement?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Okay, are there questions about this one?
Ms. Carpenter?
Okay, and it does not also include that the field, the, oh, the other thing.
Geothermia.
Geothermia. It does not include geothermal, I said.
No, ma'am, it does not.
Okay. And I just want to say thank you to our commissioners for doing this to us.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, thank you for giving this to us and the children.
Okay, we'll go on to our federal budget amendment. There was an additional $2,500 allocated into our IDEA pre-K grants for exceptional children and that was, yes, sir? Okay, okay, that's okay. And then we, and then we have one more.
Mr. Walter had a question.
I figured since we had Mrs. Legardine here, she wanted to talk to us a little bit about what that entails.
That'd be great, thanks.
Otherwise, you're just watching our, our meeting.
The preschool funds have been, as our preschool grows, we request additional funds to, for teachers and teacher assistant allotments so that we can continue to grow. And our, and DPI, as wonderful as they are, the state does allow funds for growth. And so we request them and we receive them many times.
I just want to say thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. So we'll go on to, I believe, our final budget amendment. And as we're trying to get Odell School wrapped up and the funding sources associated with it, we did agree, this board agreed, to allocate $130,000 for the playground equipment out of our fund balance and, and this is in Fund II, because that's where our fund balance sits, and we do, we do not have any fund balance available in our capital account. So that's why it's sitting here in this account. So this is the allocation for that $130,000. Of course, we're not ready to put that playground out there yet, but we have, because we've obligated ourselves, we have to put that over and budget it and so that it remains there and it's not spent for any other purpose.
Any other comments? All right, board members, do you want to put this on the consent agenda? Okay, consent agenda, let's move on to our next item. That is 4.02, which is our audit contract. Ms. Klutz, please help us.
Sure. Every year, we're required to have an annual audit from an outside firm and we have been doing business for the last two years with the same firm and we recommend that, it's Anderson, Smith &amp; White, we recommend that we continue with this firm for at least one more year. Their rates are very competitive, especially for this size system that we have. We have, we've received good service from them and they are also one of the, the audit firms that's recommended by the LGC when there's a shortlist for districts, so they're highly recommended. This is a one-year contract, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Walter?
I just, are they, these prices, are they based on the ADM or how do they price these things? I don't know.
Honestly, I don't know their fee structure, although... Honestly, I, I don't know their fee structure, although I do know that the more time they have to spend on an audit and in a school system, they're obviously going to raise their fees that are associated with their, with their contract. We pride ourselves in making sure, I pride myself in making sure that my department has everything ready for them and they do not have to do the work. In some systems and some units, the auditors will come in and they'll have to book entries, they'll have to make, do correction-type things. That is not the case in this system. We hand them a flash drive. Everything that they request is on it. They can audit and they do, they do it actually very quickly. They'll schedule us on a holiday week where there's, they're, you know, they don't have five days, they only have four days for a period of the audit, just because they know that they can get through our stuff. And they're so, efficiency, I think, drives that fee a lot.
I thought that was funny or interesting if you follow the link that you had, that Kannapolis actually pays more for their audit with the same company. But the other question I had, how many years can you use the same company or is it, is there a guideline on when you change at some point or is it?
I'm not aware if there's a legal guideline. Certainly, Sarah's shaking her head, no. I believe that we, I know that we take due diligence in selecting our, our contracts and managing the fees associated with those. I would say that, you know, I, I know there is some concern from some parties about using the same firm and mixing that up, and we've done that. And I think that what you'll know, if you'll go back in our records, you will see that we had unqualified opinions with no findings with the previous auditors, and we had them about ten years. And then when we switched, we had unqualified opinions with no findings, and we've had them, this would be the third year. In addition, I would note that we have DPI audits, we have Head Start audits, we have federal audits, we have IRS audits, and all of those, you get the same findings in that everything is, is good, there's no problem whatsoever. So, if there was any indication that we were using the same firm for multiple years, I would think that that would reflect in our other audits that are quite rigorous, and Ms. Carpenter knows about, personally about our Head Start audits.
And this is affirmative, it's one of the bigger ones in North Carolina that does a lot of school systems, so.
Exactly, and in addition, they specialize in school systems. So, I did have a question from a board member and I thought I would shoot it out to the, the auditor in charge, and he indicated that, yes, school systems are our specialty and they're the majority of our revenues, therefore, we have much to lose by doing poor audits. In addition, they have peer reviews every three years.
That's all I have, thank you.
And Ms. Klutz, as I've said to you in private, I'll say also, hopefully consistently in public, I have the utmost respect and confidence in your selection of audit firms and the relationship you've established and the professional rapport you have with the, the auditors that we deal with. So, thank you very much.
Board members, we're going to put this on consent? All right, on consent. Let's move on to four dot oh three. This is our policy revisions for the first reading. Dr. Louder, Ms. Burns, come on down, you're on the new BOE first read.
We have, there are five policies for first read. We did have a very brief policy meeting this time because we actually had to meet and then go to our budget meeting later on that morning, but Mr. Harrison and Ms. Carpenter were both there. We, we sent these out with some kind of narrative, so you guys have had these for two or three weeks and I haven't received any questions, so if you have any now, I'll be glad to answer those. What's that? Oh, I'm sorry, and Mr. Walter joined our committee last time, I apologize, and he was there, too. But it was a, it was a very quick meeting, about forty minutes, because most of us had to move on to a budget meeting after that.
Board members, any questions on any of these policies? Any comments? Mr. Walter?
There was some talk on the, was it injury and loss prevention? You were going to go back and determine who was on the leadership team? Did we go ahead and do that or is that?
Yes, so, one of the requirements of the new injury and loss prevention policy is for there to be a, a district committee that would review throughout the year, patterns and such in that area. That evidently was a committee that we've had in the past, but when the district became self-insured, kind of quit meeting on, to some degree. So, we ultimately said, well, we should pick that back up and now it's required by the policy. So, I have sent to, conferred some with Sarah and Mark, and then have sent to Mr. Shoemaker for board representation. And when we get that back, then in the next two or three weeks, we'll have the first meeting of that group.
I will take this time to announce to you that Mr. Walter and Mr. Harrison have both agreed that they would like to help you out in any way they possibly can.
And so, a lot of that group will be our safety committee because there's some overlap there, and the principals have already agreed to that, so there's three or four more people will do, but we'll have our first meeting here in the next two or three weeks.
So, that will be actually a separate committee, but it will have some overlap into the committee that Ms. Carpenter and I are on with.
That's right.
With the safety committee.
Yeah, there were some people from law enforcement and some other areas we didn't think really needed to be here for this, but we'll have representation from, from a few groups that aren't on the safety committee that'll be there, that we all thought, again, with Sarah and Mark's guidance would, and, and from Ms. Jones's guidance to say, this is probably, who would be good to be on that committee. So, again, we'll, we were waiting for board representation and then we'll set that up.
All right. Any other comments on these first read items, board members? I have one more comment. Ms. Smith, the SHAC committee, S-H-A-C?
It's still helping the management committee.
Is that actually meeting anymore or?
It is beginning to resume. Uh, next thing you notice it's not.
Okay, because I don't, I couldn't tell the board members what it actually did because we hadn't met in so long, so.
We'll get back to it.
Could you help me with that? Thank you. So, first read items, consent agenda, board members? All right, let's go to the second read. There's only one. Dr. Louder?
And that is the change that we spoke of earlier where just having, instead of just having one board member, we wanted to change to have more than one and that's all, that was the change.
Consent agenda? All right, let's move on.